Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:00. And Denny, hopefully he'll be here soon. Everyone else is here, so for roll call, all but Denny. So approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or? No, we need to say.
I have no additions to the agenda.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments about that agenda?
Move as approved.
Okay.
Or move as printed.
Okay. So the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes and then we can talk about them?
Oh, we need a second.
Oh, we need a second.
I have a second.
Okay.
Deb, all in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, we're good there. I just skipped a little bit ahead. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, and a second?
Deb, was that you?
Okay, so any discussion about the minutes? It all looked fine to me.
I just wanted to make sure that under Section 7D that those dollar amounts were what we, I couldn't remember.
7B?
D.
Oh, D, I'm sorry.
That's what, because I thought we just made them work for, didn't we up some of them?
Yeah, the motion then was to approve up to 1750. That's in the motion itself.
Okay.
I have in the.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't remember the exact dollar amounts either, but I know that you came with some monies and you just said, let's just do.
We adjusted some stuff and said, just make some maximum and then put the stuff. Okay. Then, Deb, I have no problem.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. So on to the Director's Report.
I guess, any questions about the written reports?
Well, I don't think so.
Can you, the two different grant, the one grant project that's done and then the application that's still open?
The, on the, on my report, number one, the South Dakota State Library ARPA grant, that's the, that's the $15,000 award that we received. And we are working on that. We have some of the equipment in already and we're waiting. There's one item that needs to be ordered yet, but other items have been ordered and we're waiting to receive. The number two, the South Dakota Humanities Council ARPA grant, that is the application we submitted August 27th. And it hit me, I had talked to Stephanie about, you know, I wasn't able to get the application for permission or approval to apply for that into the city council. So she said, go ahead and apply and then we'll, and then it hit me Monday morning that I hadn't submitted that yet. So I have the form filled out and I will submit it for the next city council meeting.
We have a special meeting next Monday, so it might be on that if you.
If I get it in yet tomorrow morning.
We have to vote on the medical marijuana thing.
Okay. So I.
And that was for how much?
We applied for $22,400. And I received, last Thursday or Friday, received an email saying, acknowledging finally that.
They got it.
They've got it, so.
So we did receive that also?
No, that they re.
Oh, they received the application.
Acknowledging that they received our application. And so, and we will be working as quickly as possible to make decisions on funding. So we have not heard anything on that.
And then is the, like, is this 15,000? Did we have one before that, like part of the CARES Act or was that?
That was a year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we got, that was also from the.
How much was that one?
South Dakota Humanities Council. And that, we received a $20,000 grant and that, you know, paid for, you know, new furniture.
That was that one, okay.
And people counter.
Did we do Wi-Fi?
Yep, the Wi-Fi in the parking lot, yep.
Okay.
And some, a few other items.
So Kevin, this round now is for operating costs, right?
Well, it's for more technology.
Okay, okay.
The library, the state library.
I mean, some of the, that first round application that we submitted to the State Library ARPA grant, you know, we had, you know, the $100,000 go for gold that wasn't funded, you know, we had things like 3D printers and some other items. And so we took, we selected items from that application and put it into this South Dakota Humanities Council ARPA grant application. So we put in 3D printers and, yeah. So we're still trying for that.
Okay.
Type of a service.
And then if we're off those areas, I have a question on five.
Mm-hmm.
On the budget, my understanding was that we would get an opportunity for the board to get involved in that discussion?
You will.
Okay.
So what has happened so far is the department heads have met with city administrator and the mayor. And the mayor will come to the council with they, with his proposed budget. But the mayor doesn't get to set the budget. The council's the only one that can set the budget. So that's where people from this council will come and say, I understand that here's what it says in the budget, but we would like to ask for more part-time help, whatever you ask for. And then it's, it's a plea to the council during the budget session and budget hearings that can you convince the council to move some money around or put an extra $50,000 in or something? And here's the specific things that, that we want.
Can I interject, or can, can we hold off on any more discussion on that until, because I put that as an actual discussion.
Number seven?
Number 7A.
Okay.
Yeah, item 7A, just so then we can come up with a plan for that.
So that's typical of, of what would happen is they would present that to the city finance and administrator and the, and the mayor and they come up with, here's kind of what, it's not a lot different than the governor of the state coming up with their budget and then they throw it to the legislature and the legislature does all sorts of things with it. But both there and in the city, the, we still need to have a balanced budget. So if we rob from somebody, if we give somebody some, we gotta rob from somebody else or go with less contingency or whatever.
All right, okay.
And I'll, I'll just say about the library card design, we have a webpage on our library website live now, this, as of this week, kind of from, you know, getting ready for October and, you know, the actual contests. So we'll be promoting that more these next 10 days, so.
I just wanna, I wanna congratulate you on the furniture moves and the other stuff and moving things around and making, getting books out faster and having to make those spaces. We struggled with getting previous library administration to make any interior changes at all to try and do that. Yeah, my mic's.
Okay.
And so I just wanna congratulate, I have no problem, use the interior space as you see fit, but please keep us informed.
So, yeah, you should, well, and Zach put that in his little report too, which is a few pages down, the children, a children's report from Jean and, and then, you know, he, a new home for new books. And that just happened at the end of last week or, and so you should stop in and see because we have a lot more room to display new books now. It's, and, and it's away from the circulation desk, so we don't create, we don't create a crowd in a traffic jam right there by the circulation desk too, so it's good. And then the, the statistics are, I mean, we continue to kind of follow the trends of this year.
Okay, so I love that you do this, but it's too many numbers for this spring. So is there things that you need to point out to us that are of note?
You know, I, I think, you know, are, are all items circulated is, you mean, kind of on track? You know, we, our programming for August was as expected, lower than July and June because we, you know, don't do as much programming in August. We kind of take a break to then get ready for the school year and fall programming. So, I mean, there's nothing, I guess, that really stands out and so.
Are you seeing computer use rebound at all or?
I mean, if you look at this, no.
Everybody's got a cellphone and access to a computer?
I mean, one of, I think, from what, you know, the staff has told me, I mean, I think one reason why it's way down is, you know, the teen room and the computers in there, you know, received a lot of use and, you know, with COVID, you know, we'd close that and we, you know, and we've opened the room, but we, we've removed the computers in preparation because we're upgrading those computers with, and, and so, but we haven't even had teens come back asking to use computers. So I don't know if the teens have just, due to operations last year and scheduling, you know, they found other places that they're hanging out or where they're hanging out. But, because I would say teen computer use was heavy from, from what everybody said. And I, the other computers, would you say, Jean, is it lighter than what it used to be?
I think it really depends on the day. I know today, when I was helping up at the front for a little bit and putting people on, we had, I think, every computer in the main area full. But there are other days when it's not, you know, go figure. But I know that the people who do use them are so appreciative of having the opportunity, whether it be they're on the road, whether their printers are down, or there are, there are many who cannot afford Wi-Fi at home or machines at home and are genuinely thankful, you know, for this.
And we, you know, continue to see even out of state or, you know, vehicles in the parking lot with people sitting in them, using, using Wi-Fi. So, you know, we're, the network is still getting used. And our, our, the number of, and even our numbers are down, usage numbers are down, but our number of computers available are down. I mean, the, the five teen computers, but, you know, we haven't seen, but we've also spread out computers and, and our plan is, I mean, with, you know, upgrading, not necessarily to have them as close together, but we're gonna try to maintain, you know, there was, there were a couple of, of, you know, those long tables where there were four computers and.
Right next to each other.
And we're going to limit it to three computers just so people, I think people have gotten used to having a little more space and, you know, I don't really want you breathing in my air, so. And, you know, based on a recommendation from the board, you know, a number of months ago, we moved two computers over to that adult reading room area and we plan to leave those there, so that allows us to have them spread out a little bit more too. But, you know, there are a lot of times and that they're not all being used and just a couple of them are being used.
I just want to make sure we're keeping up with what the people want.
Yeah.
The types of electronic interaction that they want to use, so.
And it'll be interesting to see, you know, with, you know, one thing that we're planning with the State Library ARPA grant is to, you know, purchase the system that allows mobile printing.
Yep.
So, and it will, it will also allow online reservation. So, I mean, they could even with their cellphone from home, log in or put in their bar, library barcode number and, and reserve a computer time, so, or they can walk up and they can do it then. But it'll also be interesting to see how much printing, if we have increased printing with, with availability, somebody walks in with their laptop or, you know, the staff have told me, you know, we even have people who say, you know, I want to get something off my phone and print it. And well, make sure you email it to yourself and then law, or whatever, and then log into the computer, open up your email and then you can print it. So I think it'll be less cumbersome for people. So, I mean, that'll be an improvement.
So any questions about the stats? Any other questions? We skipped over a little bit, Jean, about the children's report. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Just that we're, we're continuing on with outdoor storytime on Thursdays and Saturday. And we've been getting what I would say, good participation considering, you know, so for example, Saturday's storytime, we had, I think, seven families and 27 people there, you know, which is a, a good number when we're still trying to exercise some distancing. And it, what's great about being outside is we can do a lot more running, we can be messy or we can use glitter, I mean, things that we can't use otherwise. But we're also looking forward to, we, with some of our supplies, we've, we are going to be making some portable story walks that we're gonna set up in Hitchcock, you know, just during storytime, you know, to provide exercise and stories in another way. And these might be something that, you know, come October, November, we may use around the physical library, just finding more ways to, to do these story walks. Great participation with 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, and I think more of these passive programs are gonna become more popular. You know, it's hard to say, I mean, we do have parents bringing their kids to the library and everything, but I think there is some hesitation with families with young children to be a part of a group. And we'll, we'll know more when we start to go indoors a little bit more. We're also looking forward to doing more with bilingual storytime. Ada and I will probably do something online this month. It would be wonderful at some point to do something onsite, but again, we're just keeping an eye on numbers. And usually our online bilingual storytimes get, get very high reach, you know, especially when Ada like teaches three words or something like that, you know, so we often get a continued work with that. Also, we've been doing a variety of outreach. First Lutheran was in the building today. I did a presentation for teachers from south of here, Menno, Corsicus Dickney, yesterday. Next month, I'm going to DWU with Ada. They want to have us talk about bilingual storytime and then we'll be doing Read for the Record at the end of next month. So again, we keep on, oh, and then tomorrow is another day with Judy, Junie B. And all of the spots as, as of 4:00 today were, were filled. So we'll have eight or nine people in tomorrow. So with what we have, we're, I think we're doing great and we're just finding new ways, you know, considering some of the restraints we have with COVID yet, so we're looking forward to that.
Jean, when you do indoor storytime, what area of the library are you using for that?
Well, today was our, our first group since pre-COVID. And this was the First Lutheran preschool, 41 preschoolers. And we were in the community room. Lynn Vermillion is amazing with discipline and those kids do so well. They came in all masked and then in the library area, we're masked as well. If we do move to indoor storytime, we would be using that community room area, but my recommendation would be to cap numbers, you know, with just a handful of families and maybe offer additional times during the day on Thursday to reach all the families rather than try to bunch up too many at once. So those, those are things that Kevin and I are talking about. And this might involve preregistration and some things that we haven't done previously, but we might have to, to do that in order for families to feel, to feel safe. So I, again, there's that comfort level with our parents of toddlers.
Absolutely. And with all the cute new furniture for kids, do we have enough for them to be seated and spread out?
Thank you for asking that. We get so many incredible responses to our, the furniture. Just today, Lynn Vermillion said, where did you get those? I think I'm gonna order them for mine. We have found they've held up extremely well. So right now, we have six, six little benches or not even benches, stools that can support about 35, 40 pounds max, you know? I mean, I can't sit on them without just being tipped over. They're definitely kid-friendly. But when we start doing onsite storytime, if numbers would allow us to do that, it would be really helpful to have more of those so that kids, when kids see what their place is, they're much more likely to sit down. When there's too much space, that's where the, their puppy running around and miggling. So if there would ever be more money in the budget to purchase more of those, we could, we could definitely use up to 18, you know, at least.
And how many do you have now?
We currently have six.
And we, we got those, yeah, we got those from Wayfair and it was like 300-some for the set of six, which was, you know, inexpensive.
And they've, they've held up and that was my, my big concern.
Well, the kids love them. You can tell that when you go in there, they're always kind of like falling all over them and, you know, I mean.
Stacking them.
Sitting them on this side or that side or up and down or, you know.
There's a lot of spatial awareness that's being developed and experiments with gravity as well. Early physics.
That's right.
Where it starts.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jean? Okay, I think we've gone through the documents under the Director's Report, if I'm not mistaken, so.
It's just the adult services we haven't talked about.
Oh, yeah, I guess Kevin just kind of briefly touched on that, but you're right, we didn't really talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, Zach's, yeah, I mean, his report is there, you know, he reported on the one book discussion in August. Scan Day is coming up in October, so, you know, we'll be having signup times for that. Staff from State Library will be bringing equipment for scanning, digitizing items. And, and also later this month for programming, Zach's gonna start a, and this will be a in-person programming, kind of digital literacy. I think he's calling it for this first one, kind of online safety, you know, privacy issues and, and also identifying misinformation. So, I, one thing I should also point out, or I didn't, today at noon, I spoke to the, I presented to the Lions Club. I was their speaker, giving updates about the library. So I talked a lot about, you know, this programming that we've done. So, and then he also, you know, talked about the new books, so come, come look at that.
So the one book, South Dakota, that's the children's blizzard? Is that what that was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I was interested in who I'm trying to decide they should read the book or not.
Yeah.
I only bought the book. I felt like college all the time.
Yeah. And is there a Cliff Notes?
It's always yes. The answer to that question is always yes. So any other questions about any part of the Director's Report? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Director's Report? Second?
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're good. So then the financial report.
So the balance in the bank account at the end of August is $105,000, $126.85. You know, we've begun to, if you can see that up there, I'll try to, you know, we've begun to, you know, with taking credit card and debit cards, you know, transfer money from, you're receiving that from PayPal. So, you know, sometimes it's small, couple dollars. So I've been just transferring it once a month, I mean, once a week, so. And we had a couple, you know, went to verify our PayPal, our bank account with PayPal, you know, we gave them the account number, so they deposited, made two deposits, a 5-cent and 11-cent deposit, and then they withdrew 16 cents. So they didn't let us keep it, darn them. So, and then we had, you know, a check for $27.95 and some of that was, you know, money that you had approved to spend previously, that the one thing, the transfer to PayPal was actually then purchasing the new chip reader, credit card reader. You know, so they just, since they had a bank account, they just withdrew it from there. So, and then the, the monthly profit loss, 1,060, 80, or 98 in income. And you can see the book sales, 377 for the month, copies, 296. And then expenses, oh, we had to buy new checks, so that 27.95 was, we had to get more checks. The equipment was the chip card, credit card reader. Furniture was the shelving that you approved us to purchase from, from Reader's Den. And then that 16 cents was the withdrawal by PayPal. And, and then our library budget, I think we're on track with salaries there. And some of these current expenses and, and the capital like books, just at this last Monday night, or last night's meeting, we had a number of invoices that I had submitted, you know, catching up for things. So kind of over the summer, we got a little behind in getting boxes open of books that, you know, had come. So then, you know, I kind of held off submitting the invoices because we hadn't made sure that everything was in the boxes, that was supposed to be in the boxes. So I got a lot of things submitted to last night's city council for approval. So some of these.
I think there was $10,000 plus in the.
Yeah.
Bills from last night's.
Yeah, so some of these.
Haven't got here yet.
You know, like books, we had 50% left in our budget, but, you know, some of that will catch up from last, what was approved last night to, to pay out, so. I mean, we're still planning on, you know, spending most of our budget because we have it to spend. And, you know, we want to purchase the books that our patrons want. One thing I'm a little concerned, will probably be over, you know, besides repair and maintenance, which were over, but we got our latest three-month water sewer bill. And it was much higher than the previous two quarters. I mean, summer sprinkler, but, I mean, it was higher than, you know, even last year. And last year, we still would have had the sprinkler going. So did rates go up in the last, for the current year? So. Yeah. Although, I mean, we had the previous, you know, three months, we had had more people in the building too. But, so, you know, I'll just make sure that under current expenses, you know, if water sewer's over, I mean, that we will make sure that we don't go over and something else that will offset it. And then the detail that you can look through on your own if you want.
Okay. So any questions or comments about the financial report and bills? Okay, can I have a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye. All right. So we're done with number six. So 7A, Kevin, you said that you had some discussion here.
Well, yeah, I just, I guess, you know, wanted to, any discussion we had in maybe planning and strategizing for presentation to city council. You know, so I'll go back to, you know, the expense report. But, you know, the current period, or the current budget. So what the mayor and the city administrator informed me was, you know, that they're recommending or they're planning on a budget, you know, exactly the same as this year. So, you know, we had submitted requests for, you know, significantly more than that. You know, some of it was one-time items. You know, probably my biggest priority was, you know, requesting an extra $20,000 for part-time staff so we can add an additional part-time person in 2022. You know, because we're finding now that we're back to full winter hours, you know, just scheduling everybody and getting all of the hours covered, you know, with needing to have two people for security purposes. You know, there are just other times than that not able to, you know, I don't have the part-time staff to fill in some holes, to help out. So, you know, we'll see how the fall goes. But, you know, that would be, I guess, you know, if we're able to present to the city council and pitch for, you know, some additional money, that would be the biggest priority that I would ask for.
And what did the mayor and the administrator say was their justification for keeping the budget at the same level? Their reasoning?
I think that the, you know, the total requests that came in from all the departments, you know, were higher than their projected revenue for 2022. And so, you know, they needed to cut, you know, money from all of the requests. So keeping the library's budgets the same as 2021 is a positive. I mean, because, you know, last year, I mean, for 20, the 2021 library budget was cut from the 2020 budget. I mean, and that, one of the things was the part-time staff. So. But, you know, there were those same things that they did. Their projected revenue for 2021, you know, was less than all of the requests. And so, you know, we did take a budget cut in 2021. And, I mean, I would say it's a positive thing too, not to take a budget cut in 2022. So, you know, I'm not dissatisfied, but I'm still concerned about being able to, you know, maintain hours, you know, with less staff than what we've had historically.
So what you're saying then is the budget is not even going back up to the level it was before. It's just staying at the same level, which is already lower than it was in 2020. Okay. So it's interesting though, the reasoning, because, you know, things have changed. We're coming out of the pandemic and there's a lot of, okay, Steve, there's a lot of money sitting around. You know, there's the $2 million that was left over from last year and there's another $2 million coming now, you know, to the city. 2.7 million, quite a bit. When is that due to be distributed, Steve, do you know?
Sometime in 2022. It has to fit into, I think, 10 different spending categories and have it till 2024, I think, to spend.
Okay. And I know that one of the categories there was supporting small business, but I can't remember if one of the categories had to do with community. Which we would fall under. Yeah, we'd have to have a look at that in more detail.
So are there, is it possible to use some of that money to help us in specifically this part-time? Is it staffing? Is that something you can use it for, or you don't know?
It would be that. The way I would do that is the library services probably don't qualify for any of that money. But fire and police do qualify salaries for first responder items. And we're going to budget for first responder items just like normal. We're going to pay them out of general fund and everything else. So then you get that money that we can put their salaries in and get the value of their salaries back. And then you can spend it on anything you want. Which is kind of very critical loophole. But exactly what the administration has in mind for what they're going to do with that money, I haven't seen yet. But I certainly would look at trying to put in the part-time salary and make that request and use the storytime and other number increases, even the online stuff, and use that narrative to say, we need to have Jean and Zach and other people have, yep, they're filling in wherever they have to fill in, but they need to have that night and time to support these types of numbers. And the only way that we think we can do that is to add this or we say we cut hours. And I don't think that will go over.
Well, you say you cut programming and, you know, surely people would be concerned about that.
But do other things then, other things then get shut down. And that, to me, as a councilor, as a library trustee, isn't, neither of those are the right thing.
So is it risky?
Then it goes back to the hours that were open and can you operate with one person and not? And all of those types of safety things and.
Is it acceptable to operate with one person before the library doors open?
Well, yeah, but. Yeah, I mean, we already are. And, you know, and even in the summer, when we closed at 6:00, I mean, the library staff then worked 9:00 to 6:00. We opened it at 10:00. So, I mean, so we weren't open eight hours. But then, you know, that allowed staff to get work done uninterrupted. I mean, empty the book returns that, you know, filled up, you know, after hours. Get all those books checked in, you know, process overdue notices. You know, I mean, you know, there are administrative-type tasks that, you know, need some time. And, you know, it works better uninterrupted time, you know, just to get it done rather than you start it and then somebody asks you how to go and then you come back to it, or where was I? So, I mean, the answer to that is yes, because I come in at 8:00, you know, I'm there. Well, Denny, the custodian is there, but, you know, I'm there. But when we are open to the public, we need to have two people, just for safety and security.
Is Denny there all day?
No. He's there 6:00 to 2:00.
I'm just thinking, I mean.
I mean, and Denny does not do, I mean, you know, he's custodian, he does.
With the security purposes, I have to say, would it be two people technically who worry about security? Having another person?
Well, yeah, but it's the issue of, I mean, you know, he may be then doing something in the basement, you know, with the, or whatever. I mean, he is not there to, I mean, really deal with the public and serve the public. I mean, he's there to take care of the building. So, and, you know, the issue that we're talking about now is more evening hours, weekend hours. You know, he's not there then.
So if we, what will happen if we don't get the $20,000 for part-time staff? What will we lose? What will the community lose?
I'll let you speak first. Because she'll probably speak more passionately than me.
I keep my mask on to help me keep my mouth shut. I'll just speak very specifically about one area. Ada Morales has so many ideas for how she can serve not only the Hispanic community, but also the entire community. People are always, the idea for us to have bilingual storytime or to have a time where she could teach both Spanish and English. There is many people wanting to speak, learn English, as there are English-speaking people wanting to learn Spanish. And this is something that comes up over and over. And Ada explodes with ideas. And then our bilingual storytime, if we can do this onsite, all the ideas that we have. But this is, would be very hard to do without extra support. You know, part of it is the planning, part of it is the rehearsing, getting things ready. And then, of course, the actual storytime or program itself. And if Ada and I both need to be in the community room leading a program, there has to be somebody upfront. But it would be very hard for one part-time person to take care of everything upfront if the two full-timers are in the back or in the community room doing that. So basically, what would be the loss to the city? Without another part-timer, it would be extraordinarily difficult for Ada and I to follow through with onsite programming that would serve our wider community. And that's just one area, you know.
I think that could be.
That's in 2040.
In the forward, including the community and the library. It can be a focal point to start to promote that. And your comment of there's probably just as many of the Spanish, Hispanic people wanting to improve their English language skills as the other way. And the library can be the storytime stuff, to me, is the perfect opportunity to.
And starting point.
To be inclusive and make, we want them to be comfortable in the community, right?
Yep. It fits perfectly in that.
That's a way to make them comfortable without having to, we're not social services, we're not rounding people up, we're not any of that. It's an opportunity for them to come and feel comfortable. And I go back to the library being the living room of the community. And it fits, but in order for us to make that work and really make it work, we kind of got it started. We need to make it work better and then maybe even the following era can even work better. But if we don't start it, it's probably going to die.
Sorry, just letting that was advocated. They said if a community member at this hearing were to say, well, that's fine. You two are doing storytime, what's the director of the library doing? Just playing devil's advocate.
What is the director doing?
During the one-hour storytime.
First of all, it's not just the one hour. It would be all the, there's an enormous amount of planning that goes.
There's an enormous amount of planning that even goes into the simplest storytime. So the planning that goes into it and then to have two people planning together. So we're looking at the hours. Then if there's any handouts, anything for people to do, that's more time. Just piggybacking what you were saying about people feeling comfortable together, this is something also that is planned. How can people come together? So, yeah, it'd be super if Kevin could come in and jump at the front desk for that one hour of bilingual storytime or Spanish lessons. However, I don't think Kevin can come out and take care of all the little kids on a, where they just come in needing books and such, and to allow me four hours to be in the back planning. But wouldn't that be cool? No, I love it. I love that question because it allows me to focus.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
Well.
It's not just the one hour.
And it's not just, you know, planning for storytime, but, you know, then it's, I mean, and this doesn't fit as nicely into, you know, Forward 2040. But, I mean, just how we need to, you know, do our administrative work of, books go out of the library, books come back into the library, and they need to get back on the shelves. So, you know, if we don't have the staff available, you know, to check the books in and then re-shelve the books, then our library patrons can't find them and check them out. Well, yeah.
I'm not saying.
Even in this week's report on that type of question, the comment about saving 20 to 30 minutes a week because of the POS system, so we're looking at efficiencies on how to make that improve. The comment about Alrie being able to sort books and get stuff out in a faster method. So, yep, that's fair enough. We'll use all of those efficiency things as much as possible. But we still think we need to get the ESL or the story time, bilingual storytime stuff in the area we need. And here's, look how we did on numbers even during COVID during storytime that we want to request nearly the 20,000 and save that people. It's going to have to, you're trying to pull on the heartstrings of the council and can we take 20 grand or 25 grand from someplace else and move it and blah, blah, blah. I don't know where any of that can come from yet because I, we haven't seen it yet. And we'll get our first look at it on Monday night, this next month.
And I fully realize that, I mean, there are other departments.
Other departments are going to be doing the same thing.
That, you know, and there are priorities there too. So, you know, so.
But we know that there is money coming in that will replenish where there might be a shortfall if money's taken out of contingency to be used in the general budget.
There are people with ideas for that money.
I think they do.
Trick is to get all 20,000 isn't too much.
I can't remember the other pillars of Forward. Yeah. Are there any other human-related or community-related pillars of Forward 2040? Was it just the one for inclusive community? I can't remember. Just that one, that's the key one to talk about, yeah.
The other, what goes to the James Valley Community Center and adult population and nutrition and subject, making sure that that is taken care of.
So the inclusive angle is definitely logical.
Well, then what I can see so far from the city standpoint is through the library. Maybe James Valley Community Center. A little tougher bit. The bilingual, and from the workforce standpoint, you might want to talk to Karen Whitney to get the members of the Hispanic workforce, et cetera, that they have estimated in town.
And how many people are coming to the library to look for a job? That sort of thing. Because that's the other angle of workforce, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, that's not something we necessarily tracked. I mean, Zach would be the person who, I mean, if somebody comes in and, you know, is asking for help, you know, the other staff would say, Zach, will you help this person? So, I mean, we could certainly ask him.
Playing out of the workforce angle with the shared hours of MABC will be another stake in the realm of that the library can be helpful in that.
And we don't, I presume, have a date yet for whenever we get to have this meeting?
Fourth of the 18th of October, potentially?
Sometime between the fourth and the 18th.
Fourth, those are both Mondays, so it'd be-
Oh, I see.
And then Adam, if we have work sessions, I'm- It will be in, it will be in October, but it will have two or three public hearings on the, the budget, so.
So, I think before that, um-
And as I get the information, I'll send it to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Send it through, so.
I think before that, we need to get together and come up with stats and stories and, you know, all that good stuff to prepare ourselves.
Yeah, two or three-minute narrative and, and that's, you know, and then questions and, and that type of stuff, I think. I'm working with the, the golf board group, kind of doing the same thing from there.
That's helpful, thanks, Nick.
And I'll speak in favor of it as much as I can, so.
Thank you.
And the president thanks you, Emma, for taking on that role.
You're welcome.
You're going to be great. Anything else on the budget discussion? Do, is that any action item that we need to do, or that was just a discussion? Okay, and then next was the review of the needs assessment survey and the responses for that.
Did everybody get a chance to review? I printed off one hard copy, Emma, I see. I mean, so far, we've had 62 responses, so, I mean, that's a small number. I mean, it's not a, I don't think that we can say it's representative even-
Of 16,000.
Well, and, and, you know, and just, you know, going back to our, our stats of, you know, number of library card holders, you know, we, we have 75, 78 city residents who have cards, you know, county, 722 subscription memberships, you know, so out of the county, 550. And then like the, all others, that's mainly, you know, people who just come in and they want a, a library card, you know, an account so that they can use, they're registered to use our computers. So, I mean, that's typically, that's the largest part of that 2,300.
Is it worth it for us to send out postcards with QR code, like, send it bulk, postcard, bulk rate mail, postcard, cheaply enough to make it work a while? How much should we care what their number is? Just throwing it out there.
My answer to that question is no, just because Zach told me, you know, he's originally from Huron, he said Huron sent out something to all of their registered users and, I mean, they got a few more, you know, not that many more respondents than, than we have.
What's our goal?
As many as possible. No. I mean, when you, when you've done a survey, I mean, how, how many-
Well, if you say 61 is a representative, what would be?
Well, I mean, even if we have 7,500 city residents, if, if you would say 10% of that would be 750.
How about our library users, our stats? What percentage of our library users did a survey? Like, people who came in and lost since you opened it? Do we have those people? That would be a fair question.
We, I mean, the people who come in, we've handed paper copies. I know paper copies, I think we've had maybe five returned that I'm aware of. A couple came back to me, then I just took the paper copy and put it into, you know, into the online survey. I know Zach did a couple, so we haven't had a lot. Probably what, a couple of weeks ago, Zach sent out a, kind of a, one of those news flashes on the city website, you know, that you can do. You know, and that generated in the next week, a bunch, and so, you know, we should probably do that again, but-
Can we put it in the chamber newsletter?
We could. Every Monday. Okay, I will.
I'm just going to wonder targeted, so we know if we hit it or not. Like, if we're talking about library patrons using the library, we want X percent of that as our number. But using it, like visiting, visiting-
There are people that visit.
Unique visitors.
But if you have 10% of your cardholders, that'd be 750, right? That would be in-
We're not going to do that.
Yeah.
I'm optimistic, not that optimistic.
Well-
Okay, so 200?
Yeah, I mean, if I, if we would have, yeah, I mean, because when we did, when we did similar surveys, you know, at the college, you know, student satisfaction surveys, and, I mean, we had seven, well, yeah, but we-
I mean, nobody wants to do surveys, but, I'm just saying. Chamber doors.
Library traffic, okay.
Yeah. And this, I mean, this is total numbers. I mean, we had about 3,000 people in July and, and August. I mean, but, you know, some of those are going to be the same three, you know. Yeah, no.
So, 200? Would 200 be a good number? Shoot four?
I mean, even if we got up to 150, I think that would be, you know, or, I mean, if we could even double this, I mean, it would be-
I'd like to be able to say, we found a number we're happy with. Like, we hit it, yay, now we can consider the data valid, reliable, all of those fun numbers, things, stat things.
We can say that, still kind of a stretch.
I get it. I get it. But, so we can't look at it and go, well, the library, the survey says what I wanted to say right now, so we're going to stop.
Well-
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
We have to have some number that we all agree on, like, this will give us enough data for it to be meaningful.
I'll say any two of your number.
Madam President, what do you think?
A little out of my wheelhouse, so.
Well, we will send a blurb to the chamber to have them put it in their, in their newsletter. I mean, we will send out another, you know, kind of news flash off the library website or the, the city website.
How do you send it?
That, you get the, you get the, you go on to, you go on to-
It's just on the city website.
The city website, yeah. Because-
I don't think we were meant to email the radio stations and just-
Yeah, and I'll do radio stations too.
Some people will just go, oh, okay.
And something like that, then we can just say, go visit the, the Mitchell Public Library website, and the link to the survey is there. Oh, yeah. Yeah, in multiple. See, I think it's this note right here, this notify me.
Do we, has it been emailed out to our subscribers?
To, um, no, because we don't have a lot of email addresses in-
With those 7,500?
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, we, we ask for those, but, you know, people don't necessarily give us their email addresses.
There are, we can run the database through a service to get email addresses, and those services will usually bring back about, maybe about an additional 30 to 40% of the database of email addresses, and then that would actually be useful to send them out. They'd also be up to date, but we'd have to find a little bit of extra budget for it.
How much budget?
Usually comes in about 15 cents a match.
So, 15% of, or-
So, 30% of 7,500.
40% of 7,500.
Times 15 cents. Might be able to get a little bit cheaper than that. I, I, I don't know, I feel like this, the answers to this survey are really important to help our case with budgeting, besides just our planning in general, strategic stuff. So, is it worth finding some money to spend on getting those email addresses up to date?
And I guess another question I would ask is if budget hearings with the council are going to be as early as October 4th, today's the 21st.
Right.
I mean, would we, would we be able to do that or-
Anything else is one thing, do the surveys is still a number.
I think down until the 4th, though, it's already the end of about September, then you have a work session next week or something, two.
Work session on Monday. First Monday, then we'll have the, our meeting on the 4th, and then I think between the 4th and the 18th, there's going to be some, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday type, we'll have open meetings for our questions and then any public.
You'd have to put some, I just, I would say, Mitchell Public's out there.
No, we'll get, we get the first one.
So, if-
So, I mean, I'll do these other things that we can do locally and see what.
We have 100% the addresses, but it's still a return rate issue.
Yeah, you can get the email addresses pretty quickly, but then how long would it take for people to respond? I don't know.
Yeah, if you got a third of them, third of the 7,500, you got 375 more out, that would be a condition, that's a problem.
And then you're still not guaranteed the data flow out?
There's so much guarantee.
That's the problem, no, so it may not be worth the investment.
But I think of it for, that's just for this one, but then we have email addresses that we can send for other things in the future.
Right, that's what I was just thinking too, that, that might be money well spent for-
In the longer term.
Just in general, to have more email-
And a question, if our foundation people ever do any fundraising stuff, that email addresses would be available to them?
Do we ever hear about the sort who did that fundraiser for us with all that grant money that they got?
They did the art-
Arts students, the kids out in the park thing, isn't it? It is a good point, though, so currently the library doesn't have any kind of a newsletter going out to patrons with updates on programming and things that are happening?
Yeah, we also have a newsletter, I mean, and that, we're sending one out, which I think tomorrow he's going to publish it, so.
So, is that email or print?
That has, that, well, that's a print, I mean, it's kind of, well, and that's, you know, we typically don't mail it out to everybody, we just, we post it online at our website, so, kind of the same, the same types of communications that we've used for this, we use for that, so, you know, in some ways, that would be less targeted, because they'd have to read the entire newsletter and then say, oh, there's a survey, as opposed to us, you know, just doing a news flash or, or something.
Is it on our, on the application when they get library cards? I'm sure, like, I'm-
Yeah.
For the years, probably not.
Yeah, it's on there, and, you know, we also ask for, you know, cell phone number, and then we ask them if they want to receive, you know, it's also a bit odd, we ask them if they want to receive email notices about overdues or text messages, you know, and we have some people who, you know, get angry at us even though they gave us permission at one point, then they come back and get angry at us when we do send them, or, an automated message that something's overdue, and so, and then they ask us to uncheck that, we, they no longer want to receive that, and they just want to receive paper mailed overdue notices, which-
Yeah, costs money.
Which I don't, you know, I, I-
I mean, the nice thing about electronic communication is it costs basically nothing. And so, maybe that's something to consider for the future. For now, with our status and everything, could we, could we do a big push to get people to respond to the surveys, and if you respond, you get your name put in a prize draw? Can we do something like that?
No.
We can't?
Because we don't know, of the 62, we don't know who they are, and-
Oh, it's anonymous.
We haven't asked, it's an anonymous survey, you know, we haven't asked for people to, to give their name. I mean, I suppose we, we could change the survey and add a, you know, to be entered in a drawing for-
Yeah, and they don't have to, but at least then there might be an incentive to, to reply, like, you know, $50 of Mitchell bucks or 10 pounds of chocolate. That have missed out on that opportunity, yeah.
Could we go through the free PSA opportunities for right now, table this and come back to it under next meeting, communication strategies, gathering lists? Doesn't help us for our budget, but I don't think-
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to get the-
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
See, that's a good brainstorm, maybe moving a task force with community members, like, how to, how to communicate that? Well, many task force.
It's an interesting point.
Well-
In the fundraising world, which is obviously my business world, the general premise is that you always ask people how they want to be communicated with, and then that's how you do it. So, yeah, it's an interesting point. You say, do you really want to receive mailings that cost a lot of money, or can we email you stuff, or, you know?
And, I mean, you know, again, for our overdue notices, we have, we do that, we ask them, and, and I'm also not 100% certain, I think we've looked, if our database, if we can even run a report on, give us emails of all the emails that we have, because, you know, it's not necessarily intended for that. I mean, the emails are there, the way they do it is if there's an email, then we're going to send out a, a communication to that person based on if they have an overdue, but, you know, it's not, it's not designed-
These addresses, I mean, in the future, not in the next month, but with that database of addresses, that we start with those to send out, I mean, a mailing, a postcard or something.
By this time next year, we had a way to generate data, a communication strategy that would allow us to better reach clientele, patrons, and data.
Because I think if you could send out your newsletter and things through email, it's going to pick up more in the kids programming, adult programming, I just think in the future, in a year, or whatever, you have to be doing that.
I agree, because you have to work on the basis that, you know, unless people are in the library or on their way to the library, they're not usually thinking about the library, so of course you want to send stuff out to make them think about it more.
Right.
Yeah.
Although, I will, I'll play the devil's advocate, how many of you check your email regularly now?
Every day, like eight times.
Well, okay. You're, you're not-
I have pre-email addresses that I run and have to check every day almost constantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the only way I made your work, but-
But I think that then there are plenty of people who have an email address and then they don't check it.
It's just one channel, right? It's just one channel, Facebook is a channel, LinkedIn is a channel, email's a channel, texting is a channel, we just have to look at the channels that we have available to us and figure out a strategy. So, I would make a motion that we table this, or suggestion that we table it and come back, Africa, come up with some ideas and maybe have a designated agenda item for communication strategy.
I agree with the agenda writing thing, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't put this, I mean, as an agenda item, it was kind of reviewing, and it wasn't, so, I mean, I-
No, absolutely, but for the sake, I mean, I think the answers to the survey are fascinating. It's great even just to have the, the 60-some that we have, and if we can do a bit of a promotional push to get some more in the budget hearings, then it all helps, you know, all helps our case.
Okay, well, we will, we will- Okay, well, we will, we will do that and I will contact the chamber tomorrow to get it in next Monday's newsletter and contact the radio stations too.
Links for other businesses and other programs and stuff like that. And there could always just be a, a library one with a, with a link to check out what's new, check out, please answer our survey, any of that.
Do you have any idea who I should contact there? Who would, Lori right now?
Yeah, that's a good...
She'll get it from her.
She'll get it to...
If you reach out to Ashley too, I think you've already met Ashley at this, she should push it out to the Mitchell Main Street members as well.
Okay.
It just seems like we have a lot of good stuff going on and we need to make sure that we know it's about.
I think we have a lot.
Because tons of great stuff happening for the library, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Both of you.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
So we had a motion about tabling, coming up with some, no, not a motion, just something that...
I don't know if it's a motion, a suggestion.
Just a suggestion, okay. So you don't have to do anything about that?
Yeah, because it was just...
Email that to me for, for a future agenda item.
That was a, yeah, review, okay. So then the next was the new library policy, unattended and vulnerable persons. Is that just in your effort to keep policies updated, or was there...
This is a, this is a brand-new policy.
This is new.
We have not had an unattended or, you know, unattended child policy. And I think I, I checked some other libraries with their policies, and I think it was Sioux Falls that had a vulnerable persons policy. So I, we thought that, we would add that category into, you know, if we have someone like from LifeQuest who is at the library and, you know, it's closing time, you know, that person may not be someone who we should then just be shoving out the door and leaving them be unattended. I mean, not in the year that I've been here, Jean, in your time had...
It's, it's usually kids that we have that difficulty with, but we do have regular patrons who are independent but are part of the LifeQuest program. Usually, they are not here in the evening, but it's certainly something that could come up.
So can I ask what precipitated the creation of the policy, wondering if it would be included?
Because we have lots of unattended children who've been in the library. I mean, I, I heard about stories of, you know, children running around the library, you know, I mean, before COVID. And as we've more normalized more, I mean, we've, we've had these issues again. And, you know, then when I've looked at other libraries, Huron, Madison, Aberdeen, here, Brookings, Yankton, Vermilion, they all have...
So it's a standard policy?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, and there have been, it's in the past, you know, lots, from what the staff has told me, prior to my starting, you know, at closing time, you know, there've been children who are still there. And so I think having a policy of what we do in those instances as well, you know, and, and have it published so that even parents, you know, then we can point to this to the parents to say, you know, this is our policy, please be aware of, you know, what, what actions, you know, we will take to keep your child safe. If, so, I mean, we look at it as, as a way to, I mean, keep the children safe who are there and, you know, shouldn't necessarily be there unattended, and, and then keep the other patrons' visits pleasant. So, I mean, that's also part of it.
And if I may add, these, these are usually not situations where the children are coming in looking for books. Historically, this has usually been kids who have come to play on the computer. Their goal is to come to the library to play. And parents have advocated that their kids come to the library to play. So it's very, it's a very different population within the library. It's not the people coming for books, it's the, the computer games.
So do they sign up for their three-minute slot on the computer then, or what do they do?
Historically, they, we, we had situations with young people being at computers for five, six hours, not even going home for meals, and then at nine o'clock, maybe having no place to go or leaving with another band of unaccompanied children.
Do you touch on the sign-ups for the computers?
Um, there is a, there was a sign-up for the computers and historically, a student might, you know, sign up for an hour, but if there was no other computer use, the librarian then would allow them to stay at the computer unless somebody else needed to use it, and that's how the time would extend. The flip side of this is when the hour was enforced, the same unaccompanied minors, or really, a lot of under-sixteens even, then we'd just hang around the library at, at length. And I'm trying to say this tactfully, but the interest was not in doing homework or using computers for research or checking out books, but it was often a gathering place for kids to come together who had no other supervision. And I don't even know if their parents or caretakers even knew how many kids would gather unattended at the library.
And another, and then, you know, be back to the whole budget and staffing issue, is, you know, we, we would almost, we would need to have a third person on staff who would, who would be paid just to basically be the supervisor of, you know, all of the youth, which, you know, I can't afford that. I can't afford to schedule something like that.
It seems like there's a, there's a tricky balance to be struck here between making sure that those sorts of situations can be dealt with, but not stopping people from coming to storytime. So for example, you've got in the policy about how children eleven years and younger must be accompanied, but if a child comes to storytime, are they, will they, will they be precluded from attending if they don't have a parent then?
In, in, at a given storytime, it's usually aimed at preschool or early elementary. So it is very, very rare that anybody would ever come alone. Also, it's very, very difficult to, to lead a storytime in any case without caregivers present. The, the only way I can give an effective storytime is for caretakers or parents to be present, because I can't discipline and be sweet Jean at the same time as one or the other. You got Miss Jean or you got Mom?
And Emma, that was something that...
Very good question, very good question.
I originally drafted it that, you know, they could maybe be at storytime and then as soon as storytime was over, they needed to have the parent. And, you know, Jean said, that's not really feasible. I mean, I think historically, I, I mean, I, we understand that, you know, there's maybe some heartburn here, but, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, the public library can be the, the childcare center, you know, for the entire community. You know, I mean, if we had additional staff and, and so that we, we could even have more programming, that's a difference, that would be a different story. But, you know, we, we don't have the ability then to supervise large groups of, you know, young teenagers or, you know, elementary kids.
Is there a code of conduct for the library?
That will be coming at a future one.
So here's, here's my, here's my question. I pulled up those Sioux Falls policy. And the Sioux Falls one says, children using the library in their own must follow the library rules of conduct. Children behaving inappropriately may be required to leave. Children must be able to self-manage while using the library. And then it goes on to say, for the safety and comfort of children, parents or responsible caregivers should be with their children, child while in the library. Parents are responsible for supervising their children in the library. The library is not a substitute for childcare services. When necessary, the library will contact law enforcement to assist a child in need of adult supervision. So the code of conduct is kind of the basis for it, and if you can't follow that, you might be asked to leave. It seems a little bit less harsh than what our proposed policy is.
Yeah, I have, I can't, I won't vote for this policy as it's written like this. It, the Mitchell Public Library is open to the public and we can't say, because you're ten years old, you can't come in, and because you're a vulnerable person, you can't come in, or that you have to leave. I, I, I also, I also worry that in the, the definition of a vulnerable child, anyone under eighteen years old is at risk if left alone or too long or too often or sent outside the library premises is vulnerable. Every seventeen-year-old, every birth to seventeen-year-old person in town fits that definition. And I don't think we have library staff that is trained in social services issues that can tell me, how am I gonna pick a child that I'm gonna ask to leave versus a child that I can allow to stay? And I don't think we have the training and background, and I don't want to expose the library personnel to having to make that decision. I totally understand this, and historically, we've had three or four, they're, I don't know if they're in the LifeQuest program, but we've had three or four adult people who are on, I will call it, mental health medication regimes that have been off their medication and at the library. And we have had at least five or six police calls on them to have them removed because they're upsetting patrons and are causing issues. That I totally understand, but I think of it more of the code of conduct. If I, if, if I'm a parent and send my ten-year-old to the library to check out a book and I want him to sit there and read for an hour and come home, this says the library staff could call the police on him. And I don't think that's correct.
But when I was a kid, when I was, I don't know exactly how old, but probably eight, nine, ten, that's what I would do.
Oh, I went to Sioux Falls Public Library as a ten-year-old. We wrote our banks.
And I would go and I'd sit in there till she was done running her errands, and then I'd take my stack of books home with me, so, I don't know if the age, if that's by the age of eleven.
I fully understand your, your conundrum, but...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I empathize entirely.
Yeah, so do I, because I've faced it and had to go down to the library to help Jackie with the unruly sixty-five-year-old guy that was off his meds.
Well, and the...
But then that's legit enough to call the police, that, yeah.
Right.
The other piece I like about the Sioux Falls ones is it talks about basically pedophiles hanging out in the children's library section, which I also think we should include.
Yeah, I would try to...
Well, we will rework this.
Can, and, I, I guess I'd like the, I didn't, I, I liked the view of a code of conduct. If, if you've got a good eight-year-old kid or ten-year-old kid that wants to be at the library, the library is where we want them, not kick them out on the street and he's, he, he might not have any parental control, but if we got him in the library and he's, he or she is okay, that's a good place for them, not a place to kick them out of.
I mean, if you look at unaccompanied kids around town, the Park and Rec probably has multiple places where there's unaccompanied kids, right? Who are just hanging out, you know, I worry about...
But they, they make them sit all in the same spot.
Well, I worry about the child who goes to the library in the winter because they know it's warm there, or it goes in the summer because it's air-conditioned there. They go there because there's, there's caring adults who are gonna be there.
Yep.
And they know they're gonna be at least safe there or around other people.
Yep.
As opposed to being in an apartment all by themselves. I mean, a lot of these kids, I don't know, I'm just, I, I read a book called The Library Book, it was about the L.A. Public Library fire. It's a red book, gold embossed, it's very beautiful. Anyway, in that book, they talked a lot about the social services that are provided by a library system, and I get that we're not staff for that.
Yeah.
But in a perfect world, we could aim toward being inclusive and welcoming and a safe place for children who might not have another safe place to be, even if it's they're running wild, the code of conduct would give you the authority to say, look, you guys, this is not appropriate behavior, you're gonna, if you're gonna behave this way, you're gonna have to go somewhere else. But the little people who might need just, I know Miss Jean and Miss Jean is safe and I'm gonna be here, and then I'm just gonna walk myself home and the library closes, kind of breaks my heart, but...
But, yeah, but what, yeah.
I want them in the library as opposed to on the street.
I think the code of conduct might be a, a way that we can begin to deal with this. And this belief was exactly what I believed coming into the library when I started working four years ago. The way it plays out is very destructive. There's a lot of bullying that can go on in the library, and there are many patrons then who don't like to come to the library, because it can take on, at best, a boys' and girls' club feel with everybody running, 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 running. And at worst, we're talking about fights and fear and hiding out in bathrooms and police coming multiple times.
Yep.
Things I won't even want to talk about out loud. But we're, we fall into a situation then where we are spending city money and I'm spending maybe three or four times, three or four hours trying to keep order or asking kids to behave, or you might have to go home. And then there's the sport that develops of twelve- and thirteen-year-olds figuring out what they could, they can do to get kicked out, and then coming back the next day and the next day. And then you see the little four- and five-year-olds sneaking back in because they know it's a safe place, but they may not be safe because as librarians, our eyes are not everywhere. So this is, this is a, a difficult issue of wanting to care so deeply for the children of our community, for the youth of our community. But at the same time, we are not a boys' and girls' club, and there's only one of me to go around, you know? So it's, it's a very difficult thing, but maybe, maybe the code of conduct is a way to begin, yeah.
If, if you take it from a code of conduct, I can really see how that...
Yeah, it's a, it's a complex situation.
We gotta be welcoming in, yet tough enough that if they, if anybody doesn't behave...
Well, it has to be a safe place.
Out, out they go, yep.
So if your behavior is causing others to be unsafe, then you're not welcome here.
Right.
So we will bring forth the code of conduct. I mean, it's drafted, but we haven't reviewed it as a staff, and I haven't had just a look at it. So we'll bring that and, and then work it, rework this based on feedback.
And Emma, I'll find out the timing and other stuff of whatever type of narrative we want to try and present to the council.
Thank you. I think the, the thing is, we're just trying to figure out the best way to be supportive of, of you as staff, but also, you know, doing the right thing by the, by the patrons. And, and I wonder if, if this policy, once it's amended, should actually be two different policies, one for younger people and one for vulnerable people, because I feel like they're a bit different or not?
Well, and I, I'm, I, I don't know that I'm as tied to the vulnerable person. I mean, not as many libraries had that. I saw it and I thought, well, it would then kind of be all-inclusive, but maybe that should be set aside for now and we just focus on unattended child policy.
I feel like that makes sense, because they kind of don't mix it together.
There's things that overlap, but maybe not completely.
And if it's an adult that has something scored, it's a piece of the council's, I mean, you know, after...
Yeah. A couple of famous adults that caused problems.
I suspect I know one of them. All right, so we... All right, so we are not going to, we're going to table that, the new library policy. Any other comments about that, or Kevin, anything?
Just, I'll just write in the, the minutes, no action was taken.
Okay, sure.
And with recommendations to rework.
Sure. Okay, so the next thing is committee reports. Don't believe we have any. Any board input? Okay, none of that. We don't see any citizens here unless we count Jean, but we'll say no. Next board meeting, October 19th, 5:00. Now, are we going to run into something?
I looked, and...
Isn't that around...
Native American Day is the week before.
Okay.
The 11th.
According to this calendar up here.
All right, so October 19th, 5:00 PM will be the next board meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
At 6:31.
That's a very nice thump you have.
Thank you all. It lasted longer than I had thought it would, but we had good discussion.
Yeah.
Very satisfying, isn't it?